Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach. Time is approximately 7:00 PM and Mayor Catino is out of town for tonight, so I'll be filling in. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. A moment of silence. Okay, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Citizens' Comments. We will take residents first. You have five minutes, and this has to be on non-Agenda Items. If it's an Agenda Item, don't come up and speak on it. Non-Agenda Items. Introduce yourself and where you are from.
My name's Dan Willman, and I'm from Carriage Park. Last week, well, last council meeting, two weeks ago, I was here and the city manager basically stopped short of calling me and my friends fake news. I'd like to clear the air a little bit on that. So I brought up the soil arsenic report, that by the way is buried on the website. You can't find it unless you know the title of the document in the search for it in the search box. The Tetra-Tec report that should be on the website, easily accessible by everybody, shows, let's see, 3.6, 3.8, 4.4, and 4.9 milligrams per kilogram of arsenic in the soil that was put down on our beach. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection, yes, I recognize that Florida's soils have a naturally higher level of arsenic than everywhere else in the country. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection set in the 90s a soil cleanup target level of 3.7 milligrams per kilogram, which was later updated to 2.1 milligrams per kilogram. It went down. That soil cleanup target level is half that of what the soil put down on our beach contains. I have a chart here that shows the overwhelming majority of Florida's soils are below the 3.7 milligrams per kilogram cleanup target level. This is what I've been spreading. It's not fake news. It's not misinformation. And if the city manager continues to say that we are putting out base information-
Dan, just speak your comments. Don't direct them at anybody as a personal attack.
If the city manager continues to suggest that this is fake, this is false information, this is fake news, maybe it's time for a new city manager. This is not fake news. These are reports that were at one point put out on your website and then pulled and hidden. I think this should be accessible to all of the public, and that's what I'm doing. I'm making it accessible. I'm pointing out that the target level is half that of what was put down on our beach, and the majority of the soils in Florida are below the 1990s cleanup target level. That's a problem. My second topic I wanted to address while I'm here, there was recently a post, the city manager and the police department's Facebook pages about skimmers on the pumps. I think we need to talk about making a resolution to require that all gas pumps in the city have tamper evidence seals put on them. As I understand it now, it's up to the station owner whether or not they include a tamper evidence seal over the locking mechanism on the pumps. I think that needs to be mandatory citywide. This has gone on too long. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any additional residents with comments?
Diane Douglas-Holly Drive. Thank you. Thank you for sharing the number information because twice as high is pretty bad. Let's see. So what I want to talk about or ask questions about is, I was pointing to the beautification board, and I just don't, I'm not sure what the purpose, so that I can have a bigger picture of what to do while I'm there. Is this appropriate time to ask? Because we have to present everything to you for approval, so I thought, just make sure that, is it for tourists or visitors, or do we want to get the community involved? Do we want to focus it to the future and climate change? Just so I have an idea of, you know.
Diane, have you been to the meeting yet?
Yeah, I was there, yeah.
Did they give you a manual that outlines what the responsibilities and that sort of thing is?
No, I have not gotten a manual. So it's all in there?
It should be in there. And there was a manual that updated all of that and gave you all the directions and what the focus is?
I have not in anything.
Okay. Well, Grace, Grace will be-
Okay, well, that would be why I'm questioning.
That would. I think I probably answered all of those questions.
Yeah, all right. Well, good, 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 good. Okay, thank you, yes, because I was confused. Or not really confused, I was curious as to where, what I could do and where that direction would go.
And just so you know, every board that the city has, there's information on all the boards in that document, so you'll get to see what all of them did.
Oh, yeah, well, I was looking for more specific as to just the overview.
Yours will be in there.
Yeah, okay. All right.
There's a lot of work that went into making that book, so it's real clear. So once you get that, I think they'll answer a lot of questions.
Well, yeah, 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 I just thought it would be here already. Had I gotten that, I wouldn't be asking this question. I wouldn't be standing here except for, yes. And then, yes, quality of water. And if you notice that the water this year, the sand fleas were dead floating in the water while I was out there. I've never seen dead sand fleas before, just floating in the water. The other thing with quality of water, the water is a beautiful, lovely color. It reminds me of the color that's down south that they do for draining out the, I don't know if it's the lime mines, the down south, you know, that color when you drive down the I-95 into that pretty pond you see there and that lovely green. We have color that remnants, you know, resembles that color. So the ocean's not of a color that I've seen before. So there's stuff going on, so, yes, yes. So I'm piggybacking on what he says. But I do monitor the water all the time, not with numbers, but just by eyeballs and 30 years of walking by it. Okay, thanks.
Ma'am. Additional citizen comments?
Okay.
Okay, hearing none. Non-residents, another, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Here for a couple reasons. I've been noticing a degradation in the traffic. Of course, we're one large community, whether we're in South Patrick Shores or Satellite Beach. I made a request for the Department of Transportation to do a corridor study. I looked on their website, I do not see any studies for the A-1A between Pinida and O'Gally. So I've reached out to them, I've written them. I cannot get any data on that. We had a zoning change up in South Patrick Shores, I requested from the county the paperwork, and I was very surprised to see that the level of service, the LOS, between Ocean Boulevard and Berkeley is a D. And then when I looked up other reports south, you had levels of service ranging from C to E. So in the broad spectrum of planning, we all have to work as different communities and have a broader picture of the beachside along that lines. Second issue is, I know you guys are aware of the public's concerns about drinking water. This summer, we had the algae issues. People felt that the saxitoxin was in our water, as indicated by the earthy musky smell caused by the geosmin. A lot of people were sick. So we've been keeping a closer eye on the water, and we found, we got some reports back because we've been testing a lot of chloroform positive water, and you're aware that the county did testing after the town hall, 130 tests, and a number of those came back with chloroform bacteria. Not E. coli, but we don't know what kind, and as you, I don't know if you're aware, with Flint and other areas around the country, the issue wasn't actually so much lead as it was dying of Legionnaires. So having chloroform bacteria is a very serious issue. I want to bring your attention to it. The third thing is, of course, you've heard from the advocacy that we have the FUDS eligibility now after 30 years. That's a very big deal. The meeting will be held here in Satellite Beach at Pelican next week. I also want to bring to your attention regarding that, that it's not just the disposal site on South Patrick Shores, but there's also a drainage channel that came down from a chemical disposal area to the area above Pinida and then on down, and that comes down to roughly Satellite High School. And so there's a question mark, does this relate to the cancers up at High School? The second aspect is, there's another drainage channel that comes down off of what we call the Skirpin Dump, and that goes all the way down to Indian Harbor Beach. It's on the EPA Epic Study, which is online on my group on, it's now Waves, is our new name, so Waves Beachside. So you can find that Epic Study there. This is a page of it, and it denotes the drainage channel. And then, lastly, I made a request to the EPA to come in and investigate that, because that drainage channel, it is, does not come under the FUDS. I want to be very clear about that. The drainage channel does not come under the FUDS, because the FUDS is for the disposal site and the otherwise possessed area by the Banana River Naval Air Station and Patrick Air Force Base. What that channel is, that's contaminated, coming off of the military base, so that would come under RAB. So I just want to make you aware, because I understand you guys have a lobbyist that you pay to help with issues, so that might be a good task for them to advocate, to get some testing and have Patrick come in and evaluate, because the county found TCE in that trench area, which up in our area in South Patrick Shores is delineated between Pelican and Seagull. And so between those two houses, that's where the trench ran. And they did a shallow well in there and found triethylene, trichlorinated ethylene, TCE. Basically what it is, it's the solvents that was used to clean the aircrafts. They have a number of TCE plumes on Patrick Air Force Base, so if this isn't out of the realm of possibility. And lastly, they say my are tested, had testing by EPA, and they found chloroform, bromide, chlorinated ethylene, and one last thing, and dioxane, and a sweet smell consistent with TCE. So we may be dealing with TCE plumes here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any additional non-resident comments? Okay, hearing none, bring it back to council, and we'll move on to the proclamation provided by Mindy on declaring October 25 through November 1st as Mobility Week 2019. Ms. Mindy.
All right. So our official proclamation for Mobility Week is that we're going to start the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see first. So, whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative offer by the Florida Department of Transportation and Department of Agencies to promote awareness of safe multimodal transportation choices by hosting annual collections of outreach events, and whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives, and/or implement new policies. And whereas Mobility Week is also an opportunity for individuals to explore the various transportation choices available to them and think about how multimodal transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, and improves the community health. And whereas Mobility Week is consistent with Space Coast Transportation Planning Organizations' key priorities of promoting travel alternatives and education. And encouraging pedestrian and bicycle safety. Likewise, the Le Quan Celebration is also consistent with Space Coast Area Transit's key priorities of providing quality transportation services that meet the needs of color and enhance the elevated life of the community. And whereas Mobility Week supports the Space Coast Initiative's initiative of Vision Zero and action plan to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes and all road users, and to support safety in our county transportation system, and now therefore our mayor will sign this. May our city of Satellite Beach, Birmingham, Florida, be replaced the week of October 25th through November 1st in mobility.
I think they wanted me to just say a few words about some of the things that are going on for Mobility Week. And actually, we're going to be back in Satellite Beach at Cardi Park for one of the RRFEs during Mobility Week, doing some outreach and education again. There's a Ride with Dim event, which I have not had the pleasure of going on, but if you have not been on one, there were some flyers, did we have any extra? Yeah, there are some flyers and some information circulating around if you had any questions about how to sign up for that event. We're doing a big event in Titusville that's geared towards seniors. There'll be some Halloween trunk-or-treat activities going on in different places in it, and like you've been in the resolution, it's just a week to maybe try a different form of transportation that you haven't done before. If you haven't gotten out on your bike in a long time, get out and, you know, go for a ride or go for a nice walk and get on the bus and just, you know, try something different to bring awareness to all of that. And I was also told to mention Vision Zero. Vision Zero is an initiative that has actually been around 20-plus years. It started overseas, and it's centered around the idea that the only acceptable number of traffic deaths is zero. And we have adopted, the TPOs adopted the resolution, and also approved a work order for us to develop an action plan, and at the end of that action plan, we'll have toolkits that'll come back to the municipalities, that will give them guidance on how they can implement Vision Zero strategies. And we're going to do our best to eliminate all serious crashes and fatalities in this county. And a lot of that involves our most vulnerable road users, which are motorcyclists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. And if you'd like, I could speak a little to the A-1A corridor. Would you like me to address the A-1A corridor? Because since there was a question on it. The A-1A corridor, actually, we have done, or FDOT, it's their road, has done so many pieces, studies here and there, and they're like, wait a minute, there's just too much confusion. Satellite Beach is interested, Indian Harbor Beach is interested in lowering their speed limits, getting them down more in line with Tocco Beach and their 35 mile an hour limit. So FDOT's current thinking, and I think they're pretty close to going ahead, was studying the A-1A corridor, the entirety in Bravard County, and looking, and then coming back and telling the municipalities and everybody involved what needs to happen to get speed limits lowered, to make improvements so the whole corridor is safe. So I don't know, we'll try to get a hold of it FDOT, but there, it is being looked at.
The last time I spoke with the District Vice Secretary, he was, he wanted to, when we wanted the sidewalk fill-ins on the west side, he wanted to address that in that study. So it seemed like they were moving forward with it the last time I spoke with him.
Right, they just, you know, I mean, there's just been a lot of little stuff going on, so they just said, hey, let's just-
And they had to finish stuff before they started that. That was the other thing, is they wanted to finish some of the improvements and study them before they went into the next study, because they wanted to see the results and, you know, where they really needed to concentrate, additional sidewalks, additional lighting, stuff like that, and, you know, have some data before they moved into the study. So that's kind of what stalled it a little.
And I do know they developed a survey tool to come in and question folks about the effectiveness of the RFPs that you guys have in place already, and of course, the second set of those is going in. But there are other improvements that were planned that are actually kind of being held up until this corridor study can happen, but it will be A-1A in its entirety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Gibson, thank you for reading the proclamation. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to city council comments, and we'll give Julia a break tonight, and I'll make her go first. We'll pick on Dominic. Dominic, go first.
My attendance, the Space Coast League of Cities meeting Monday night, and that's all that happened.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Gibson.
I attended the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization meeting, and there's been some concerns out there, and they don't necessarily directly affect Satellite Beach, because we don't have, we already have the crosswalks. But I just kind of want to address an email that was sent to me, just so that there are people out there listening, that I know a lot of us are being affected because of the commute to and from work, and I'd like to just express the need for, you know, a little bit of patience, you know, it never is fun whenever there is construction. And their initial rollout of the barrels obviously was not effective, but what I appreciate is that FDOT did listen to the concerns of the citizens, and boy, they got them left and right. And they have made changes. In case you haven't noticed, they broke it up into three sections now. The initial concerns were that, you know, you've got this long linear forever line of barrels, and they're halfway into the lane, and you see people hitting them left and right. And then there was also not a pull-off area for first responders to be able to get by, so there was some concern about that. So they appear to have addressed them. I did have a conversation with, what was her name, Anna Taylor, and expressing her, you know, even breaking into three sections, I'm not entirely comfortable with even that for the traffic flow, because they are only working one section at a time. So the other two sections sit and they're not being used, but for the effectiveness of getting it done quickly, they have the barrels up. So I guess as citizens, we always can express our concerns to FDOT, but you have to take into consideration that, she did say that they would be open to taking those away and putting them off as they work those sections, but that would make the process take a lot longer. So when you're questioning FDOT or you're contacting them, you want to take that into consideration. What is more important to you, to get it done quickly or, you know, have it more convenient? So other than that, I attended the Space Coast League of Cities dinner as well, and I think that's it. I'm not sure. I turned 21 again yesterday, so there's that. But anyways, that's it. Where did I turn? The 24th, I think?
All right, Councilwoman Zicky.
I have nothing, except I'm with League of Cities. With them, so.
All I have is I would like to thank our, opened us up quickly, our fire department for the shirt. That's very kind of you guys to do that. Thank you, guys. You know how much I thank y'all, and that was very kind to get that. And I know Dominic got one, too.
I got one, too.
Oh, Mindy got one, we got one. And we all got one, all right. So thank you, guys, ladies and gentlemen, for this. Appreciate it very much. It was very kind of you all to do that.
But I got the hat first.
We're waiting for something from Alan. Alan's got to come up with something.
Can I take like a forklift, maybe, for when I want to move stuff around?
Yes, I'll shovel, we'll hope.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to city attorney report. Okay, we'll move on to city manager report.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have upcoming, on November 2nd, Saturday, from 9:00 to 3:00, we have our annual Founder's Day in Marketplace at the DRS Community Center and the Soho Parade, so we look forward to that. It's my favorite time of the year. I received a thank you letter from Stephanie Hill thanking the Fire Department for above and beyond help, and I wanted to read it. I know it's a little lengthy, but I'm hoping that I can get through it without choking up. So it's very, it just describes what an incredible job a fire department does, and the personal relationship that they, you know, have with all of our residents. It's just amazing. And so it's very important that I think everybody hears this. Says, Dear Ms. Barker, this letter has been two years in the making, as I searched for just the right set of words to convey my most profound gratitude to a very special group of people. Though I realize that a simple thank you note could never be enough, I would like to take a few moments to share my experience and explain why I feel so fortunate to reside in our town. September 29, 2017 began just as any other normal day at my condo in Satellite Beach. After returning from a walk along the ocean that morning, I started to get ready for work. When a sudden headache struck the left side of my brain, it quickly became apparent that I was having a massive stroke. Within seconds, my entire right side was paralyzed, and I was unable to speak. Lying on the floor, unable to move, my thoughts turned to the fact that my three children, ages 18, 20, and 22, would soon be coping with the loss of their mother after losing their father just five years earlier. As luck would have it, my daughter Jessica happened to be home that day, and she found me on the floor within a few minutes. She immediately called 911, and the Satellite Beach Fire Department and Police Department arrived almost instantly, instantaneously. The first responders acted with such speed, skill, and compassion that I can say with absolute certainty, they made a crucial difference in the outcome that day. I was rushed to homes where a team of neurologists was able to remove the clot in time to reverse all of the effects. If I hadn't been, if it hadn't been for the quick actions of the first responders in Satellite Beach, I likely would not have survived. We are so fortunate to have the team from Satellite Beach Fire Department led by Chief Dave Abernathy, and the team from Satellite Beach PD led by Chief Jeff Pearson. Chief Abernathy happens to be the person I remember most from that day two years ago. Not only did he go above and beyond to lead the team for my care, but he also recognized the need to ensure the safety and well-being of my extremely distraught daughter. After I was loaded into the ambulance, he turned his attention to making sure that Jessica made it safely to the hospital in time to make critical care decisions on my behalf. Several days later, when I returned from the ICU, there was a beautiful card waiting for me from the entire Satellite Beach Fire Department team who helped me that day. Words cannot adequately express how grateful I am for all of the very dedicated first responders who were there in my time of need. Members of the Fire Department and the Police Department soon came back to my building to see how I was doing and to make some improvements to the condo access for first responders. The men and women from both departments are truly exceptional. In a day and age where negative press seems to get all the attention, I think it's important to share the stories of triumph that play out every single day in our community. There are so many heroes hiding in plain sight here in Satellite Beach. My heartfelt thanks go out to all of them, and also to you all for all that you do to make Satellite Beach a wonderful place to live. And on duty that day, that was Matt Hawley, Nick Walsh, Jay Dragon, and Darren Black. He was on duty that day. Yeah, so I think, you know, that just, we passed that letter around City Hall, and there wasn't a dry eye after reading that. And, you know, you're a mom, that's what you think of, you know, so. So, you know, everything else I have is just boring now, so. The East Central Florida Regional Planning Council will be celebrating the commitment of the region's county, cities, and government agencies to the East Central for Resilience Collaborative, and then we'll be hosting a signing ceremony on Wednesday, October 23rd, at 1:00. And Alito and my staff, Julie Venn, will be there to represent the city, and if any of you would like to go, let me know. Councilwoman Gibson and I will be traveling to Washington DC from October 21st through the 24th. We're arranging right now with our lobbyists to meet with several legislators to talk about prefost legislation. And then the Sustainability Board will be hosting a solar expo at the Civic Center at 565 Tassia Boulevard on Saturday, November 23rd, from 9:00 to 2:00, and it will present on solar technologies and funding. And so that's a pretty cool event. So that, we're trying to bring all of the people or, you know, agencies and companies that provide solar and put it in one place and basically walk residents through putting solar on their properties. And then I just wanted to respond to the arsenic issue. We, if you read that report, you'll see that one of the sites that tested above the residential cleanup standards for arsenic was actually the site that was tested before the sand was put down. And then one tested higher after the sand was put down. So there's areas across-
No, 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 no.
There are areas across Florida that have background levels of arsenic that are much higher than the residential cleanup standard. That is a fact. And I understand that, you know, people get upset when in fact some agree with their opinions, but that's a fact. And so that study is not on our website, because we've had to take down multiple items from our website, since the studies are not ADA compliant. So that is why they're not available on the website. Anybody can come into City Hall and request it. And then I wanted to let Chief Pearson to give updates on some of the crime arrests that he's been making. He's had really good stories.
Thank you, like mayor, councilwoman, and city manager, the community that can talk to you. Clearly, the community knows that the beachside in Mariposa hit pretty hard with car abrasions and car messes, which obviously very unusual, like that kind of stuff. Every once in a blue moon, you'll have something like that happen on the beachside, but not often we have a rash or even like that. It obviously causes concern, so I wanted to give an even update, and in chronological order, what happened, because of course, again, is the good part, is just really the first part, again, that this would be good for the general community. It started with a baby that had a baby born, started a month before the spring, a month or two term, and coincidentally, that happened if Danny, the worker, entered by Bosch, and he is our- with Danny, the worker, and he is our sports commissioner who runs the criminal investigation division. So of course he had a little more details about it than the normal person because it's Danny number. So of course they reached out to him and revised it. So then he started having issues in, in the heart of the community, North Satellite and Navarre and, uh, Navarre area. And they just sounded way too suspiciously civil. So he started thinking, that, that kind of stuff doesn't happen. And what happens in Palm Stand and M O L S is saying, he started kind of wanting to look at it a little closer. So in August, we had two vehicles stolen from Ray Avenue in one week period. No, no suspects in time. And one vehicle was located in North Satellite Beach. And another was located by Sergeant Owens, who was on traffic side on South Patrick and just happened to have a little help and see a tow truck coming down the street with karma that and recognized that that happens, he stole a car from the city from two days ago. That's pretty impressive throughout the fact. So because of that, he didn't want to worry or want us to get more information and, you know, cameratically because it was stolen inside of a W12 satellite, so it was clear of jurisdiction. So in September, then we had, um, four burglaries in Melvin House. And suspects were calling our main camera from one residence, but we couldn't identify a vehicle to randomize them. And video was unclear enough to, to, uh, make ID just, just on the photograph. So then we had some residential burglaries on Maplewood. And the homeowner on Maplewood was a little disturbed. It was a little disturbing because she was in her house and her doorbell, the one that she had on the door opens. So she's like, why is the front door shining going by the middle of the night? So she sits up on her bed and she happens to see a flash out through the crack of her bed and door. And then of course, the flashlight stops, shines in the window. She freaks out early in the night. So of course, it makes off. Well, that doesn't happen. When all these things are going on and the description that she gave Tuesday matched what we saw on the main camera matched the, you know, it's just, it's just, it's just the darkness. So working out that we came out, we had a cop out looking and trying to do, uh, best we could to find the person, just to get any information that night. So then we got to find the vehicle that was assigned jail, which is in Marissa, coincidentally, right? Then we found that stolen vehicle from Navarre was recovered by a tow truck. And then a stolen vehicle from Coachord was abandoned immediately. So now we're seeing what's going on there. So as it turns out, you know, everything's the same, the animals are the same, the stolen vehicles are the same, great and similar types of vehicles. And patterns started to emerge. That's when, uh, Manhouse decided to do some crime acts, you know, old school, get the crime out, it pans out. And then we figure out exactly who's doing a lot more in the government, which by the way, would be a lot harder to address. He, he's been here thirty-three years, likes to do things old school sometimes. Um, so come to find out, one of the vehicles that was, uh, stolen from Maplewood was recovered on Able Drive. And one that was stolen from Sugarwood was recovered in Palm Central. When we found out that the three suspects, juvenile, were arrested in Palm Central, oh, because they committed all those crimes and nobody could catch up on them. Because it all happened so fast, you have to build cases, you need to go, it's probably use of, you know, you're charged. I mean, it's not a horse. So the judge just left me up, said, all right, we'll still have points. So see what about. And off the American back in Bar County. And coincidentally, it only stopped for the duration of the time that they were incarcerated from Palm Central, which was when I got back home and then started again that night. So then early Monday, I was found in May September, a homeowner from Jamaica, it comes out in the middle of the night because he's hungry, also Wednesday. So he walks out and he sees some juveniles in his neighbor's car. So he's like, oh, answer it. Goes, goes kind of the back and side, calls 911. We get there, we're looking, the officer gets there talking with the person that made the call. One of the officers sees a vehicle going a hundred miles an hour, arrested by the South Patrick. A hundred miles an hour. Well, obviously, you're not going to pursue that, that vehicle. That's, that's why it was crazy. So, um, he was trying to follow, trying to get the back to the church. He couldn't get a driver. And then come to find out, we were done with the person on, on, uh, Jamaica, he got this car with little windows. And as he was driving down the street, the stolen vehicle passed him. And he looked at it like, hey, that's my, he first truck. Well, a lot of us was one that stole them, but he scared them out of, out of the car. They stole the one that's door. So that car is crashing into a woman in over, a woman who was sitting, uh, at Bar County South Patrick, waiting to make a left turn on South Patrick to go north. And the vehicle was fast, hit with such force that I'm sure he's in a bank parking lot. And a bank parking lot where it didn't make it much over the bridge and then they abandoned it. And they took off the foot. Well, Navarre gets called, they have a lot of dollars out there, we're finding them, we're there. So the conclusion is, she parks, now they're arrested, now they're charged with a couple things. We just had a rock impending from Palm Central. But that's it. But we don't know, you know, it's not like we had a, not a, not a, all know that that spree is going on, is all we know. But we only have some cases that we can put together fast enough to get there. So the man has decided, she's not going to live it. So he got his detectives to get, tell our agencies to be there, protect us to go to the first appearance. You know, you know, the officer, you may have brought the first appearance, he goes to go in, you know, to not believe they did this thing and that's it. Well, juvenile is a little different because people who have to leave, they all end up on the scores and out the way they go. And he didn't want that to happen for obvious reasons. So of course, calling the church state, it's like, well, we was first, seeing it crazy. Then, well, if we can help the judge believe what we know, what we believe that we have and what's going to be coming, then maybe it wins on the nut. So Navarre talked about that they could prove that what they thought they did, how they thought about what they could prove, what they suspected they were doing. And Detective Collins started and he talked about the case I just told you, flashlight that the vehicle's in and out. The judge talked about, and said, that's not dark enough. Whether they score points or not, he says, everyone will go into juvenile detention, twenty-one days secure. That is a lot of those times. You got people should get ready to do what they can and can't prove, but, but this has to stop. And after enough to know that there's, that you will be a long way for now to clear your debt. And with that, uh, one, uh, single face action since then. So, um, like we had that not happen, then they will be out. And what we'd be dealing with is we could finally put it all together, we could score out. But I mean, you know, only contract is you can have in the wake there and so you can get that out. So I firmly believe that, that doing that and organizing that and getting there in front of the judge absolutely stops what would be more, more victims than stolen lost cars or whatever. So I just thought that was, that was worthy of explanation with that, uh, the city manager, our staff. She also created a good idea to let you all know, you know, as well. Um, and then second report I have is, um, we just put out on social media, which is, and I've just gotten the vision, I think she has not, you know, heard that, which I, I was, is, is really, it's really good to hear. So Officer Martin has a three in the morning, is doing business chess. You know, every night he can do business chess. Of course, wants businesses first, always wants to be on the first level. Officer was describing how he did that. He looks up and sees a son, uh, tractor and an SUV at the gas station at Airway Hills. So she's kind of looking at it, she's chatting, seeing what everybody is, some usual time. And somebody takes off, he gets the pad out and the SUV, the driver, the SUV jumps in the car and takes off. So he stops the SUV and on the front passenger seat is a mother of a smaller thing on. So he calls up, um, our canine, Officer Martin, replied, he said, they go with the, go with the open box and see what you see. And they're looking, you know, to see if it matches up. So while he's talking to him, she's, she radios to him, obviously out of the rear side of the car, and says, yeah, this is exactly what it looks like in that head. So he asked, kind of searched the car. Well, apparently thinking that, that his explanation for what's the motor was when he asked him, he said, oh, it's just my computer, I have this computers. He figured the top on it. So then he said, well, they have anything to deal with. I kind of chose an actual normal thing. He's like, okay, for search, he just didn't send a search. And we find that. And of course, it matches up with what's in the box. So Detective Blue came out, recognized that that's, that's a pretty high-tech city device. So she called the forensic team at the Department of Sheriff's Office. That's the mobile, that's four thirty morning. But because they're the ones that did this, so I mean, the forensic detective told that within fifteen minutes and said, if you think you caught a skimmer in the act, then how they're right there. So they came out and actually proved, confirmed it. So that person was arrested. And they're in process of getting a search warrant for the city device, the vehicle, and the, the drivers to follow. Um, and in the far, there was a whole set of keys that come to find out matched several boxes to the motor station, um, gas pumps. And it was a whole range of probably twenty-five hour keys that went to border, I was counting the gas pump boxes all around wherever. Is this person from South Florida? I mean, not even, not even coming in the cabin, not even from, it's in part of the two hours waiting, coming up to, uh, to, to do this. So literally just, well, two hours ago, two and a half hours ago, I got this, uh, email from the sheriff's office, from, uh, Sheriff Hyatt. I don't know if I read the whole thing. The important part, I just wanted to read this paragraph to get that, I'll be done. Uh, Chief Pearson, I have a personal complaint called Officer Martin, Officer Clay, catching the, can identify suspect. No one in law enforcement officer or law enforcement agency in the local cabinet has ever caught a skimmer layer suspect during the installation process in the car vehicle. The actions of these officers provided valuable information regarding the large skimmer organization. This was a breakthrough our, even on a primary task force needed to move forward with our case. I respect the recommendation that Officer Martin, Officer Clay, you consider it your officer. That's, that's pretty significant. I have the sheriff sending the letter, um, and the email, uh, criminal investigators, so it's, you know, trying to, Sergeant sending you a letter saying that no one's got, no one's able to do it. And that's the great thing they need on a much larger scale that, you know, we don't have the ability or the staffing to handle. And they need a ton. And it's just nice to know that, that no one, well, sleeping, that there's, there's people out there, you know, looking out for things and protect us. So I thought that, uh-
What, what happened with the semi? Said you guys got the place on it or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's what I remember. It's been at the foundation. So the questions I can answer might be so limited.
Oh, I got that. That makes sense.
I don't remember.
Would it be appropriate to recognize them here at the council meeting, at an available council meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, is it all right to, to, we can just hold on a little bit to, we kind of see where this goes. Because the more publicity gets, you know, I wanted to generalize, I mean, the larger share of investigation and problem now.
Well, you think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I'm on your show because we're on Facebook. Yeah, well, like, like, I want people to know that this may go up, that we can discuss about it.
Well, like Dominic said, we'll wait on your time.
Yeah, if you don't find out, I-
Absolutely.
You know, we don't want to do on that. I just, I make sure that-
It also lets our public know that while your people are out there working, there's also people out there breaking the law at that hour in the morning. So, you know, um, we're kind of, that they're out there and we appreciate everything your people do.
Yeah.
Thank you for awesome police work all the way around. The earlier car break-ins, car burglaries. Keys in the car? Cars unlocked?
And every single case in every single city was an unlocked car and key driven. If a car was stolen, key driven, it was burglarized, every single room.
Homeowner unlocked door? Homeowner unlocked door?
Yeah. Um, the interesting part, the owner of the vehicle that was not open, the husband and I actually know him, he called me to prepare. I said, I thought he was upset because, you know, the car was stolen. So it turns out that he had his wife's keys in his car and he left his car open. Hers was locked up tight. So they found he didn't go to the car and it's open. And went, oh, it's ours, it's the stolen car. And he, hey, did you please find a door open?
That's, I mean, that's probably a good reminder to people that we, we are a very safe city, but other people come to our city who are not good people and-
And by the way, they find the car, knocks on the door, knock in, she said, did you see one of them?
She, and they, one of them had the garage door opener in the car and that's how they got in the house.
Yeah. The, the, the garage door opener, we rush. And the doors of the garage, because of the house.
Right. Okay. No, but that makes sense. Okay. Yeah, that's pretty bold. I mean, when you said earlier that like you stopped them from stealing other cars, I think, I think it would have slowly progressed into something much more nefarious than just stealing cars and driving a hundred miles an hour in the neighborhood. Yeah. Mm-hmm. They better never come to my house. Just gonna say that right now. Yep. Thank you. Nope. Thank you.
So, um, I just have one action item. And that is, uh, the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network is helping support efforts to extend the solar investment tax credit. And they're encouraging the Southeastern mayors to consider signing the Solar Energy Industries Association's multi-mayoral letter, calling on Congress to extend the tax credit. Um, and, and basically, you know, we just kind of explained what the tax credit is. But it's basically the major tool that homeowners use to, to put solar on their homes. So we're just asking for your permission to allow the mayor to sign that letter.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, sending of that letter.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Montenaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson, to allow, permit or encourage the mayor, mayor to sign the letter. Additional discussion among council. Hearing none at this time, since it's an action item, I'll open it for public comment. Is there any public comment on this action item? Hearing none, bring it back to council.
Councilwoman Muziki?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montenaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robert?
Yes. Motion passing unanimous.
I just have one other announcement. Um, Gail Meredith, one of our, our resident that passed.
Yeah.
Um, her funeral is this Saturday at 10:30. And if you would like the, um, details of that, just let me know and I'll, I'll send it over to you.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay. Um, just one, just one thing. I, I know what, Cassie, you always want to know when we're gonna, if we're gonna be at the Founder's Day. I'm personally gonna be there. So count me in. Got two?
I'll be there, but I have to go really quick as I-
Three.
I'm committed. I'll be there.
Really, you have four out of five. We never know about this, so.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
All right. Let's move on to agenda item number eight, which is a consent agenda, which we can entertain as a consent agenda or break it out. The only thing that I have from you guys is that the city attorney has requested that on action item A, we, he read the resolution. How would you like to act on this, guys?
I would like to make a motion to approve it after he reads it.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Montenaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson.
Resolution number 1019, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, in support of Florida House of Representative Bill, House of Representatives Bill 141 regarding water quality improvements.
Okay. Any discussion or questions before we move on? Okay, at this time, this is a consent agenda, I, items eight A and B. Is there any public comment regarding action items A or B as a consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, bring it back to council. Anything else, council?
Councilwoman Muziki?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montenaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robert?
Yes, motion passing unanimous. So let's move on to agenda item number nine, uh, proposed changes to the bond fire permit program and fees. Courtney.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Liz is going to help us present this item. Um, to start. So first of all, um, thanks for staff for being part of this, uh, program change. Because there's a good call too. And your agenda is pretty detailed. And so we just wanted you to know that, um, there's a lot of new plans, but it's very real and it's what I think is going to be honest. And everybody, they take, you know, they're not a patient, they take deposits, they do the, you know, well, promising statements for all of the studies for, you know. So, so we thought we needed to, to get this program because some of those things are on the way. And we want to make sure that when the residents come to our beach and our visitors, that they're having the safest dreams that these residents are selling, you know, the deposit really gives us an opportunity to make sure, or hopefully, that they will be good, you know, when they're here and pick them out themselves because they really deserve this deposit. They don't really currently have that. So I went through, um, ended, you know, whole section on what the improvements would be, would be improved. And then some made some changes. And so some of the highlights I'll just say, um, you know, just really this three months process, we've been working on this for the last several months. Um, and so the changes and additions will actually comply with state statute because currently we are not as far as the base of the planning of fires, um, with the term this season. Also, the increase will bring the program to the actual cost to provide the service. Um, we would like to complement this beach ranger programs, the safety, you know, we don't have eyes on the activities, first hand activities, but we're a lot, you know, more engaged than, you know, and we all have a reservation. That's very important. Um, there's also more one-stop shop. You know, you can come in literally, uh, the website would have these kind of process. It's like we get things on the hands. You get in there, you know which beach locations are available. You can hit where you want to hit. You can put the whole application. You can get it notified. You can, um, scan it, send it back to us. And we give you your approval. You can have your permit and you're all ready. So, and then we still have, you can walk in and you have the same activity. Um, but it'll be a lot easier, a lot less on the halls because our system allows us to be a little bit more flexible than what it might have. And we're quite ready to respond for the trail, but as we are adding more things to it, that's just going to be a lot more streamlined for the residents coming to our beach cameras. And then Alan, we're gonna, we're gonna make it a little bit more visual.
Yes. Well, your shirt matches the A, so. But Doug, you're nice.
So we have twenty-four site locations. And so you get out to the beach, you say there's six locations and then High Tower. You know, a little, 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 that's plus enough. And then the next guy is out there and like, you're on a stop, I was over there. The left is a nightmare when they don't behave and they leave their trash. But they leave burning embers for walkers next morning to set it to, to site that person for, you know, paying. So we're really working hard, Cassie and Leslie are working on to a Google Earth GPS system for your sites. So you literally click on site A, it'll bring you right near the Google. The site A, it'll show you what the amenities are near, the party, ADA, restaurants. If there's parking, if there's a lot, you know. And so you can't get lost in that one. Because on your current, it will be A, you're in A. And so you wouldn't want to be at A, especially if you've got a deposit out. You might be a deposit out. So again, the, what Cassie said is very consistently for group to develop our other facility rentals. The whole premise we bring them in keeps us fun, the liability. And then of course, this is a, you know, this is a feeder service. So this is not probably has, you know, the folks that are joining Satellite Beach's bonfire program. Because we are pretty much doing it now. I literally pulled up bonfires to see where they do pollution. And then it's California, it's, it's not. And that's why we get so well successful. And we want to continue to be successful with this program. But we also want to make sure the people that are there are safe. And, you know, we have all these, and then we're gonna monitor too, so that we can bring that to what the actual costs are. And so, you know, my figure of all the improvements and changes, but again, any questions or comments to add?
Yeah, this, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that the reason why we started this review was because we had a resident walk in the beach in the morning and step in a, in a hot fire that was just covered over with sand. And even though the agreement with the bonfire permit holders requires them to put it out, douse it out with water, which there's a very large source right there. They, this group, and it happens quite often, they just cover it with sand and it just smolders and somebody actually stepped in it and injured himself. So with, with those issues in mind, we wanted to make sure that we could pinpoint the person who's having the fire with what is left there in the morning. And that, because we don't have them demarcated, that's been a problem for us. And we also thought that with the deposit, we would have a better ability to, you know, that's, you know, sometimes you just have to hit people in the pockets, make them behave. And that's basically what the intent of that is. And so we have that same process with all of our other rental facilities. And it's the same thing. We're, we're having to clean up. The public works department cleans up quite a bit of debris during bonfire season in the mornings and tries to get it done before people are out there walking, but sometimes can't get there in time. And it's just, you know, the amount of work that we're putting into it, the fee is not covering what we're, what we're putting into it. So twenty percent of the bonfire permit holders are city residents, the rest are not. So that's why we wanted to make sure that it was a fee-based system and not covered under property taxes, so that our residents are not subsidizing the other people that don't live in the city.
Yeah, this is just another example of the concerted effort that our departments look at as a group and come up with. I mean, when I first saw this and read it, I went, wow, this is pretty, this is pretty good. It covers everything you need to cover. And I'm glad that your people are getting some of this, you know, for the work that they're gonna be doing, cleaning up some of this stuff. You know, I've used for various organizations, you know, our facilities and paid the deposit in the past. And, you know, if you clean it up, you get the deposit back. So, you know, for fifty dollars, they're getting to enjoy something that they're going to do. And like you said, a lot of this is people that come from outside our city. So it's great that they have the ability of doing that here in Satellite Beach. But at the same time, they need to be responsible to clean it up. And I think this is just a great example of all of you working together to bring forth this recommendation because it covers pretty much everything.
I have a couple of questions and a possible suggestion. Are the, are the restrooms at like Pelican and High Tower open all the time? Are they open in the evenings for bonfires?
They're open for a certain...
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
They're open for a certain amount of time. The police department blocks them when they have an opportunity. So you can't really know when there are folks still on the beach having a bonfire. And the problem with leaving the restrooms open is you have more opportunity for vandalism and they... One of the, in some situations, actually Paul Purkey found folks painting toilet paper out of the restrooms to use as candles for their bonfires. They couldn't get it going, so they just decided to paint toilet paper out and like that. And that was their, their fire start.
And also, can you, can you...
Well, you know, maybe. So, so those are the challenges that we have with leaving the restrooms open. We love to maybe leave the restrooms open all the time, but there's more opportunity for problems.
Right. I would, I would say with the increase in price, it might be nice if somebody was at Pelican or High Tower that they knew for sure the bathrooms would be open until nine or 10. Like, I think that's...
Ten o'clock after ten, right?
Is it ten o'clock later? Okay. It's usually like, okay, that's, okay. Right. It's per bonfire, right? It's not like a seasonal charge, per bonfire, right? The part about cleaning up, and I was reading the use agreement, and it says recreation firesites must be fully cleaned prior to departure. My suggestion might be maybe a list of your expectations. Because some people doing a bonfire might not know how to fully clean up, like what your expectation is. In order to get your money back, we expect these things to occur. So maybe just a couple of bullet points of expectations.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Yeah, like fire out.
Right. We have that, let's go where, whole fill, pick up all trash. You know, leave the beach like... Not in all of somewhere already, like, don't we already have that? Like the rules, isn't there rules like you can't burn? Some people think like, you know, well, glasses made out of sand, so I can do my... Yeah, I mean, honestly, like the, the stretch people do, you know, to justify. But I, and it, you know, and I have to echo Alan's words because I have seen the pictures of what those restrooms look like after some of these bonfires. And, and I mean, you know, I feel like giving Paul Purkey a raise just for having to deal with that one restroom because they are really bad sometimes. And so we, we did start that where we started closing them at, at 10, you know, to open them for the bonfires. But, you know, there is the, especially when there's a younger crowd.
And then would the signs be posted actually on the beach, like up at the Dune Line? On the Dune, okay. So they would be...
I was gonna say that as well, and say that could result in the kind of instructions of the shore. Or even after 10 o'clock, it's gonna work.
Yeah.
Sometimes they'll be going mornings, sometimes it's 10 hours, other ones are...
But they're not, they're not close to seven or eight.
There's no way that we do that.
No, and I don't think that you should either.
I just want to say, we, we spent an evening in Tallahassee going over this, going around some circles with some wine in our system. And you get, I, Liz, I'm super impressed with what you did. Because there was a lot of like, I don't know if we can do this and I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that. And Cassie, you guys, I think you really, because we, we were just having lots of angry discussion because it was very frustrating that, you know, you have a beachgoer. Almost we were concerned about being sued. He had like second degree burns on his feet because he stepped on this ember walking on the beach in the morning. I mean, you should feel safe, you know, walking on the beach and not get burned. I mean, other than hot sand at one o'clock in afternoon, you know. So I think you guys did an excellent job. I mean, Jody, those were really good suggestions, by the way. And, you know, thank you so much because, you know, we're gonna get paid back for our time spent. And I think it's really gonna deter, you know, you know, we have some teenagers, there are some families or younger teenagers that have, you know, maybe families with more money, but it might be less inclined of, you know, be willing to spend the money knowing you're gonna lose it. And then also we can hold them accountable because we know who they are. And then maybe, is there something in there about it, down too many strikes against them, like an owner? And then also with transferring it from fire to rec for the permitting process, that leaves fire open for more monitoring, which is what we wanted to do, is increase their ability to monitor the sites more. And that's kind of their, you know, the regulatory aspect is where they're, you know, that, just increasing those efficiencies. So the rec is departments, you know, they run out facilities every day. And, you know, the fire department has that regulatory arm. So we thought that that would be a better fit, moving in that direction.
Well, good job, you guys.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the fire department's bonfire permit program and fees and/or provide, and fees.
Dominic, does that include the suggestions that Jody made as well?
Yes.
Right, Liz?
Yeah. Second.
Second, the motion by Councilman Montenaro and second by Councilwoman Gibson for approval of agenda item number nine. At this time, I'll open the public comment portion of agenda item number nine. Diane, come on up.
Diane Douglas. I live near Pelican and I'm excited about this, but I do want to share thoughts that I've had over the years during the bonfires. Natural wood, not ones that are soaked in poison. If we can put that in there. I have to close my windows on my house because the chemical smell is so bad. The lighter fluid. I don't know if you've given this any thought, but it's awful, just awful. So if we can somehow put natural firewood in as opposed to... Okay, good, good.
So I think what's going on the front is we'll have our eyes on the experiences. And obviously, we're able to get in there, we're going to remember now that it's...
Because it's... Yeah, that's okay. But I just wanted to bring that up here. Okay, good. Yeah, I have to close my windows a lot. So like during the winter, it just is, it's, it's, yeah. Then the other thing is, like, if it's gonna be a thing, and then of course on sustainability and all that, again, here's back to the chipper mulcher. But anyway, doing the wood, gathering the wood, if we have our wood and you guys want to do, do a wood pile, you could sell it. So, or something like that, I don't know. But, you know, if, you know, I mean, just to put it out there. So, you know, when we do tree cleanup or whatever. But you'd have to have arborists so that, you know, which ones to do. So you're not, you know, doing, what's that called, O E N or to anybody. So, yeah. All right, so I just had to put that up there all the time. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Diane. Additional public comment?
Yeah, moment again, Terrence Park. I was taking some notes about this. I've got a couple of concerns, but I think all around, this is probably not such a bad thing. My, my first concern is, are we now gonna be paying? I go to a bonfire every year. We always clean it up after ourselves, follow all the rules. I'm a resident and I would bet that most residents do. Are we now gonna be paying a hundred and fifty dollars upfront versus twenty-five? Right, but there's also a hundred dollar deposit, so. Okay, so upfront, it's a hundred and fifty and then you get a hundred back. Okay. Yeah, I'm not so, I'm not so against that. That's actually not a bad idea. It holds people to account and the likelihood of agreeing, and I, I understand that as well. Not so bad. Resident discounts. Is there a possibility of getting discounts for residents? You mentioned that the majority of these permits are from out of the city. I'd be willing to bet that the majority of those out of cityers are the ones that are, they're causing the problems. They're not following the rules. So I'd be willing to bet that the majority of the people in the city are following the rules because we live here and we don't want to walk on the beach and step in hot embers. I, I'd be, I'd be thrilled to see that, that recognition passed on to the residents in the form of a discount for us. Bathrooms, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. Those bathrooms were closed at nine P M. last year at Papagallo's, I believe it was, the Sunset Beach Access. I went down there every year, like I go to a beach fire, and barely after sunset, I had to go use bathroom. Bathrooms are closed. We're gonna have, we're gonna have problems with, I mean, if people can't use the bathroom, what are, what are they gonna do?
The bathrooms are at Shell Street. First of all, Shell Street no longer has fire...
Bonfires.
Bonfires. So Shell Street is closed.
I presume that's probably due to the Papagallo's thing?
I don't know what that is. You know, I think...
Last year, Papagallo's had...
There's some conflict between partying and things like that, so I'm not gonna do that.
Okay.
I can't tell you, the, the restrooms are on timer. And timer closes lock stores at ten o'clock, opens at six in the morning and turns the shower off and unlocks the doors at ten o'clock.
Okay, so the bathrooms are automatically locked. You might want to check and make sure those clocks are being set or they're like savings hours properly.
And do that every, and we, we kind of change it to be like every six.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Well, can I just address the resident rate? The reason why we have standard rates in our city, even for all of our athletic programs, is that we have agreements with the county. And at one point in time, Pelican Beach Park and High Tower were both county parks. And part of our agreements with the county is to have standardized rates for not only our athletic programs, but everything else that we do. So while I understand your concern, you know, the agreements that we have with the county is that our rates would be a structured rate for everybody. So it's just, it's just the way the agreement is that we've had. And for us to do something like that, I think would be sending the wrong message to the agreement that we have with the county.
That is correct, Alan, yeah, you're right.
Is that a permanent agreement now, or is there a time limit to it?
Place for, I mean, I remember David talking about it for years, that, you know, this is what we do with our recreation programs, whether it's with Little League or anything else. So, you know, there's, there's been a precedent set and I don't think we should deviate.
I think this was, in terms of versus some of those properties, who's making the, you know, programs, you can't differentiate between what that city has in common.
The other, the other thing too is it's a fee. It's a fee-based program. So if there is some subsidizing of the property, with property taxes, then I can understand giving a discount to residents because, you know, they're already paying for it. But in this instance, we have designed this for the fee to cover the cost of the program itself. So, so in that instance, it's, you know, if you're, you're not paying for the bonfire program unless you...
Any additional public comment? Steve.
Steve Osmer, Cinnamon Drive. I was approached by a few people and got a few phone calls on this. I will say for the majority, it was all good. I think the only thing that came to mind was the hundred dollar deposit. As people say, that's your outline from the beginning is a hundred and fifty dollars compared to when we just went from twenty-five dollars. That's a hundred and twenty-five dollar jump in one year. As opposed to would the council consider maybe only having a fifty dollar deposit this year? See if that corrects, rectifies the problems that we're having. If it doesn't, then I think you would have justification to say, yes, we definitely want a hundred dollar deposit to it. And if it works, then you leave it at fifty dollars. Only because there are a lot of younger families here or you could have some younger groups, church groups or things like that. Again, that need to come out with that initial outlay of that. So again, just, just as a thought, I, again, everybody that I've talked to and mentioned it, definitely agree with, yes, it should pay for itself. Yes, we want responsible people, people who really want to have the bonfire, not just throw a party on the beach. Those are the folks who really want to come down there and enjoy that. But again, you want to make sure that it is an equal opportunity for everybody, every resident of every economic background to have an opportunity to come do that. And again, just from one year of twenty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars just from one season, other is quite a bit of a jump. Either way, I support it, but I just wanted to pass on that as that was some of the words that I got from residents.
Thank you, Steve.
Two questions I'm gonna ask. The hundred dollar deposit, is it cashed and then returned back? It is cashed. So they're out, they are out, it's not just being held. So they're, they are out a hundred and fifty right from the start. And the hundred dollar deposit is pretty, that's the standard for... Okay.
But it'll get charged too.
It gets charged and then it gets...
It returns and so on.
Right. Right. So, yeah, they only have seventy-five dollars in their bank account. Like, they can't, like, it's not just being held. Okay. And then the hundred dollar deposit, that's standard... And then, um, the hundred dollar deposit, that's standard for any rental facility?
Except for the clubhouse, which we just entered last year, it's two hundred, all the rest of our facilities are all high.
So would you feel that the, the upkeep and the cleanup of a bonfire is equitable to the upkeep and cleanup of one of the pavilions? Would you consider those pretty equal? Okay. Those are my questions, right? Right.
I wanna make a comment on that. I think, you know, when you're looking at deposits, you're looking at what the cost is to fix any damage, you know, so typically, like, the staff time and all that, and, and I think everyone here is pretty sure that we love our beaches, and I really don't think there can be a price tag added to what is left there, the trash that is left there, the plastics, the contaminations, and whatever, there's lighter fluids and all that, and I think a hundred dollars is, is a fair price to ask for people to be responsible, and they, they're gonna be a little bit more considerate of it, um, because we, you know, there, there is no price that can be attached to the value of that. Um, and, um, I appreciate that some people might not, and I, I understand that, I mean, I've, I've been there in my lifetime, but, uh, the end of the day is, is that we do have our other residents are destroying, I, I actually had some teenagers on my street that I know for a fact were trashing the beach, and of course, I had words with them, so, um, you know, it's, I, I would not be okay with taking it any lower than a hundred, I would almost be okay with going a little bit higher, personally.
Uh-huh.
And so, your staff will say, hold on, call your mother, and I shouldn't be here, because if you're the current holder, if you need to be here, then you're responsible. And of course, the mom could just stay down all night, you know, and, yes, it was our kids, so this is, we don't owe them a lot of that, um.
So what we could do to try to address that concern, though, is, you know, like, when we, we're starting this November first, if you approve it, and we could come back to you maybe February first with a report to see if any, right, that's bonfire season, right, you know, so, it starts in November.
And ends at the end of February.
Ends the end of February, so we could come back in March to let you know if the permit number dropped, which would be an indication that it's too expensive, um, and let you know, and then if that's the case, then we can move to a different strategy. But, um, that's usually the, and, you know, and that, that might help address some of that.
I, I kinda look at this, you know, we take credit cards now, and they're never gonna get billed, it's gonna be credited back to them before it even shows up on a bill. So, I mean, if the majority of people are paying for credit cards, which I guarantee, when you start looking at those, and we run pavilions and all that, you know, if you can put them on a credit card, that's what most people are gonna do. They're gonna have their deposited credit back to their account before their bill even comes. So I don't see the hundred dollars as being something that's gonna deter somebody from having a bonfire, um, especially if they know they're gonna clean it up and get their money back. If they're not gonna clean it up, we'll shame on them, but I don't have a problem with it.
Just one more, um, you know, we have the heat nourishment project starting on the first, but we're starting, come Saturday, the project, and now we'll be down to these meetings to see how it's creeping out towards us, so there may be some adjustments to these plans.
And we may see a decline.
Or we may not be able to have the bonfire, or we do everything we can to try to accommodate them. We talked about even as it gets closer, saving a couple of sites, if we need to know someone, but it gets, you know, all High Tower, and, you know, we, so, we're gonna let them know upfront this year, so that they see the numbers a little bit, but, but it looks like it's not gonna happen more hard, or, not so again, of our, our bonfire season, so.
On a typical Friday and Saturday night during the season, are they almost always awful? Yes.
So we average out, um, forward, how many, nine hundred and fifty-one permits? That's, if you average out some these weeks, was eight fires, and I, that's what we get, and we average, we said we would like to analyze upon about eight or a month, and that number actually averaged out to eight, so, um, you know, any of us, you know, not so much, but.
It's very successful. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it's great, because, you know, listen, right?
It's a special thing, yeah.
Face the comments, and also, we'll be a hundred and forty, it's your purpose.
Okay, public comment is still open, is there additional public comment? Now, Diane, you've already spoken.
I always wonder about that.
Well, there you go. Hearing that, I'll close public comment, we bring it back to council. Um, the recommendation that is made by Courtney, to kind of monitor this and give us some data, is that acceptable as part of this?
Um, I'm all for the data, but I think, you know, based on the fact that we're gonna be, you know, in a rehurishment project, I could see where our numbers might decline, so, I mean, you know, we'll look at the numbers.
We'll, we'll make that, we'll make that note, and, and be able to give you that good estimate, because we're, we're actually holding some open for that reason, um, so we can move people around, and, you know, and so on, so, um, so we'll, we'll be able to account for that when we report back to you.
Very good. Okay, Gwen.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, motion passed agenda, so let's move on to agenda item number ten, which is agenda items for next regular council meeting. Courtney?
Just letting you know if you have any issues, or anything to add.
As you guys know, if there's anything that comes up, please get with her, and, uh, let's get it on the agenda, or discuss it with Courtney. All right, and the last agenda item is adoption of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the workshop meeting, city council workshop meeting minutes for October second, twenty nineteen, and the regular meeting for October second, twenty nineteen, both for city council.
All right, Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilwoman Rosicky to adopt the minutes of October second, workshop October, October second, regular meeting. Gwen?
Okay, Councilman Montanaro?